Record. Okay. So seeing that we have everyone here, we do have, oh, we do have Pam and Debbie in the room with me. We'll call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which it stands and which it foundation.
Divisible, indivisible, infinite, just as far off. Before we begin tonight, Tom?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm, okay. I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the loss of a loyal Manassas citizen. Carol Herziger. She was an educator in the Manassas School System, a historian, co-authoring two books on Manassas and Nina history. I was fortunate enough to be part of a video documentation of Carol and her memories this past January. It was a joint venture of the Manassas and Nina Historical Societies for their archives. She will live on. Carol was 99. She touched so many lives and would be truly missed by many people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes. James?
As I have a moment of silence for the people that have lost their lives due to the COVID-19 virus, and a moment of silence to honor the essential workers for their service to our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Ali Ozzie, could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevenik?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Here.
Alderman Repella?
Yeah.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a temporary suspension of the rules of the Common Council and Mayor to allow a teleweb conference. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we suspend the rules of the Common Council and the Mayor so that we can do the teleconferencing of web conference.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who you chose.
Alderman Langdon?
I don't think Mark was one of them, was he? Was that you, Mark? Okay.
Yes, I was.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item?
When we make a second, why don't you just say your name?
Pardon?
I'm saying when we make a second, why won't you say Alderman XX's name when you make the second?
Okay. The, under reported department officers, we have a COVID-19 update by Director McKenney.
Are we having the public first, Mayor, or?
The public comes after that, actually.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right. Never mind.
Director McKenney, are you still there?
Pam, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
COVID-19 has brought historic and challenging times to our nation. And I'd like to review the current case counts we have for Manassas and the state with you. As of this afternoon, Manassas has 13 laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19. When we spoke on April 21st, just two short weeks ago, there were four laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19. Two of our cases are from Calumet County and the remainder are from Winnebago County. All of the residents that are COVID positive are being actively monitored by the Health Department. They have been compliant with Health Department requests. They remain home in isolation and are following all recommendations to prevent contact with others. Our Health Department is currently conducting contact tracing to identify and follow up with any people who had close contact with the individuals who tested positive. In the state, there have been 80,467 negative COVID-19 test results, 8,236 positive test results, 1,621 hospitalizations, and 340 deaths. Today, we are actually following up on 27 contacts. Even though this sounds a little daunting, we do have a plan. The Badger Bounce Back Plan will open businesses and society in phases. It incorporates recognized research and guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, the American Enterprise Institute, and the White House Plan for Opening Up America. To reopen Wisconsin, we need to see the following. Fewer people reporting flu-like symptoms over a 14-day period. Fewer cases of COVID-19 as a percentage of total tests over a 14-day period. Hospitals treating patients without crisis care. Testing in place for at-risk healthcare workers. And decreased numbers of infected healthcare workers. Every resident with symptoms of COVID-19 should be able to get a lab test. We need contact tracing of positive cases and adequate personnel, personal protective equipment. Our Public Health Emergency Response Team is planning. At the Health Department, I've been working with four health departments in, or five local health departments in Outagame, Calumet, and Winnebago Counties. And we're exploring setting up a community site in our area in cooperation with the Department of Health Services and the Wisconsin Army National Guard. We have cross-trained our staff at the Health Department to assist with contact tracing. This gives us bench strength and flexibility. We have identified volunteer healthcare workers that will assist us should the need arise. We are assisting the state in reviewing guidance for various sectors. And I think this will help our city as we plan with our businesses, our educational institutions, and long-term care. Safely reopening our communities requires the right strategies used at the right time. We don't want to go about this suddenly because if we change course now, we could risk a surge of cases. We have much more detail on the City of Manassas COVID-19 website and on the State of Wisconsin Department of Health Services COVID-19 website. Want to say to Manassas residents, thank you for doing your part and staying safer at home. There are no vaccines that can prevent the spread of COVID-19. Limiting physical contact between people is the strategy we have right now to slow the spread. It allows our healthcare systems to keep up with demand. It protects those at highest risk of becoming seriously ill from COVID-19. You know that to be the elderly and those with medical concerns such as diabetes, heart, and lung diseases. But we also realize that everyone is facing challenges. Please visit the Manassas Health Department COVID-19 website for resources. Call 211 or 877-947-2211. Again, call 211 or 877-947-2211. This will help you connect with services in our area. There's a friendly voice on the other side of that phone call. And they're available 24/7, 360 days a year. We are hearing of unique ways that you are caring for each other. Manassas senior center staff are reaching out to 200 senior citizens every other week by phone call to connect with resources. There's something called Volunteer Fox Cities that has over 50 volunteers that are vetted and trained to help connect and offer resources to the community. Individuals have even expressed their willingness to give their COVID fund to help others make ends meet. These are examples of your continued strength and support for each other. Thank you, Manassas.
So I have a quick update on employees and how we're working with our staff right now. As of last week, all of our Public Works and Parks staff was back on-site. They were still separated by work groups and we are taking temperature checks of all employees before they start the workday. This week, we have all of our office staff as well at City Hall back in the office. We have not yet begun public access to City Hall. If you can conduct your business off-site by telephone, Dropbox, or email, that's the preferred way to do that. If there is no other way to conduct that access, we would make an appointment for you to come into City Hall. We require a temperature check and we would isolate you in a separate part of the building away from the rest of our staff. The library has been open for, since last week, for drop-off. Actually, curbside pickup of books. So that's where we're sitting right now with staffing. Does anyone have questions for either HR or the Health Department at this time? No?
Alderman Grady has a question?
Sure.
An employee does come to work and he is, he or she with a high temperature, what is the protocol after that?
If you are sick, you will be sent home. So we're recommending that if you're sick, you don't even come to work. But if we, if we find that you have a temperature, we will send you home sick. Nancy, I don't know after that, are we going to require testing or do you have any other?
It would be suggested that they contact their healthcare provider and test it if there were symptoms.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. What about the office staff and the, and the administration staff? Like the community development, that type of, those type of people at City, at City Hall? Are they back at work?
The City Hall Office staff is back at work. We started this Monday. Everyone is in the office. We do have a few people with childcare issues that we're still working through. But everyone is, most everyone is working from the office at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anything else? Randy, did you have something else?
I'm good.
Okay, I, I'll put your hand down, okay?
I think I did, but okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no other discussion on that item, we'll move on to the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move to receive Minutes A through G and Communications H through N. And I do have comment.
Okay. Is there a second? Alderman Taylor?
I'll second that.
Okay. Stan?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Manassas Police Department for the 2019 annual report. I found it very interesting, especially the last page, how well and how safe Manassas is compared to the rest of the country and the state. And then I also kind of want to announce, I'm not sure how many people are listening, but the Chairman of the Memorial Day Parade, Michael Taylor, sent us a letter indicating because of COVID-19, there will not be a Memorial Day Parade or the Armed Forces Day celebration. They've been canceled. That's it.
Okay. Alderman Taylor, did you have comment as well?
Yes, I just want to...
Hello? I'm not hearing anything.
I think James cut off maybe?
Mayor, are you there?
I, I'm here. I just muted it unmuted. James, you want to turn your mic back on, James, and see if it works now?
How's that?
Oh, there, yeah, we got you again now.
Okay. I just wanted to echo those sentiments about the Manassas Police Department, the outstanding job that Chief Steyka in this department is doing in our community. And the numbers show it. Thank you for that. And also, I'd like to make a comment on Christopher Evenson's public comments, a, a letter that he mailed to the council. I will be paraphrasing it so it's not, it's not verbatim. The utility relocation required by the bridge replacement and the roundabouts and the loss of Dr. Larson's property and the Bauta property is something that should have been disclosed and discussed at the time the decision between repairing and replacing a bridge was being debated. And further, the Dr. Larson property is now going to be used for a utility structure, which was not a part of the DOT renderings or the hearings for this project. Now, well after the fact, we learned that the utility will be footing the bill for the $2 million to relocate the lines under the river. This is in addition to the municipal cost. It should have been part of the bridge considerations years ago. And it might have been a decisive, and as well, whether to replace the bridge. He further goes on to say that, I, I fear that utility revamp is, is just the first of negative fiscal surprises that will be coming. When we, when we have to repair the bridge in the future and the bridge breakdowns, the city has no staff and we don't even know what warranties will be associated with, with the bridge. We don't know what the overall damage will be to the government and budgets as well. We do know that many of the forecasts are dire, ranging from recession to actual depression. And he goes further on to say that I do understand that the DOT has the final say on whether this project moves forward. But I do believe that the city's position is still of great importance. To move forward with this project risks very real progress we have seen in our city financial health. It is prudent to do everything possible to hold this project and hunker down fiscally around this. And we see that what the world looks like under the new normal. I'd like to say myself that the Mayor and I have had ongoing and recently discussions on this matter. The bridge, the bridge will happen at some time. But as the city leaders, we need to exhaust every effort not to own this bridge or to maintain this bridge. Other communities have done just that and we need to lobby our governor and state officials so Manassas does not own or have to maintain this structure. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the Minutes and Communications? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any? Are there any opposed? Hearing no opposed, the motion carries. Item G is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public? I have a couple of public on my screen. You need to unmute your microphone and/or press star six. If you are there and wish to speak, you should do that now. I don't see anyone coming up, so we'll move forward on to the consent agenda. There are nine items on the consent agenda this evening. Does anyone wish to have items separated at this point? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna need to separate three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. So basically, just if you want, I, I'm, make the motion.
For minutes.
Sure. At this time, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Common Council Minutes of 42120, sign die, and then the Common Council Minutes of 42120, the new council.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
There's a second from Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item three is a recommendation to award the street construct, reconstruction and at various locations to Northeast Asphalt in the amount of $956,177.2. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's a motion by Alderman Langdon. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
And a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item four is a change order to Northeast Asphalt. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the change order for contract unit number 2020-01 in the amount of, we're adding $143,000. Change order number one.
Is there a second?
Second that, Mayor.
There's a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item five is a payment to Myron Construction in the amount of $157,680.3 for the Public Works Facility Construction Project. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the Public Works Facility Construction in the amount of $157,680.3.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There's a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ted Grady?
Yeah, I have a question for Annemals. How is this going with the new construction of the Public Works Building?
Again, outside of our little issue with, with a little more garbage than we anticipated in that one on the east side. Everything is going well. We are about a week, week and a half ahead of schedule. The foundation should be done by the end of this week. And they're lansome block now on the interior walls. And the plan is to have some of the Spancrete walls the week of the 18th, I think of May. They're looking to have those delivered and start standing it up and that's gonna start taking shape then.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Ted?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item six is a change order to Peker &amp; Sons. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion for a change order, to accept change order for Peker &amp; Sons Construction, contract unit number 2018-04 for Community Way Extension. And that is a subtraction of $15,859.47. Change order number one and final.
Is there a second?
Here, I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Are there any, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item seven is a payment to Peker &amp; Sons Construction. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept payment to Peker &amp; Sons Construction, contract unit number 2018-04. That one is also for Community Way Extension in the amount of $24,250.40. Payment number three and final.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item eight is the Public Works Facility Environmental Consulting Services Agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept Public Works Facility Environmental Consulting Services in the amount of $3,190.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye, aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item nine is the recommendation from the Administration Committee for the Development Agreement between the City of Manassas and Woodland Development LLC. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the Development Agreement between the City of Manassas and Woodland Development LLC for the third addition to Woodland Hills.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? No discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Ayes.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item J is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April 23rd through April 30th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April 23rd through April 30th, 2020, in the amount of $927,149.85.
Second by Alderman Ted Grady.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. We have one recommended for approval and one recommended for denial. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand nineteen through twenty-twenty-one licensing period as listed under approved. It's City Clerk's memo, April thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Is there a second?
Second, Alderman Ted Grady.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing all in favor, seeing no opposed, I suppose. The motion carries. We do have one rec- denial? I am not sure if Mr. Gill is on this evening. I do have two people listed as public. Is Mr. Gill here this evening? You'd have to unmute your microphone. I don't think that he is one of those people. Do we have a motion for denial? Or approval, I guess, at that matter? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the denial of operators license to Son Gil.
Alderman Ted Grady, second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will take a roll call on this one.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item three is the Class B fermented malt beverage license for the Manasha Athletic Association. Is there a motion? Alderman Ted Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion for the Class B fermented malt beverage license application for Manasha Athletic Association. That is an absentee agent for Caswell Park concession stand, May fifth, two thousand twenty to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
There's a second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those, oh, Becky, you have discussion?
Yeah, um, it does say in the memo that the clerk would report on the status of the inspections of the concession stand at Caswell Park at the meeting.
Yes, um, I did hear from the inspectors. They were able to get out there on Friday, and everything is fine, uh, with the concession stand. Um, with a few things behind, and they were, everything is good. Todd was happy with it. Fire Department said they were fine, too. So, and, um, everybody's been out there.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing no opposed, the motion carries. Item four is a change of agent for Walgreens. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the change agent for Walgreens, real five Racine Street, Manasha, for the twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty licensing year.
Is there a second? This is by Alderman Langdon. Any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing that there are no opposed, the motion carries. Item five is the Development Agreement between the City of Manasha and Alexander Bishop One LLC. Sam, did you want to start this before we?
Uh, I certainly can. Uh, so in front of the common council tonight, uh, thank you, Mayor, first of all, uh, is a, uh, memo put together regarding the development agreement between the City of Manasha and Alexander Bishop One LLC. Uh, this development agreement, uh, was for the site improvements of the Manasha Plaza, as well as the redevelopment of the former Gardenview, uh, restaurant site, uh, which now houses the, uh, existing Starbucks building. Uh, so again, part of that development agreement laid out certain obligations, uh, for construction of both, uh, properties there, um, as well as looked at some additional valuation to the building. And, uh, we have, we have noted, uh, many defaults throughout this agreement, um, including the, uh, failure to start construction of the plaza space. Um, that development agreement basically gave them sixty days to cure that. Uh, they did not cure that without, um, having started that. Um, continuing on, they, they did, uh, come to the December sixteenth common council meeting, whereas they updated the council. Uh, the developer explained that the current projects, uh, that they were working on, uh, including the second tenant for the Starbucks building, as well as a, they were looking for an amendment to the development agreement to be able to secure lending, um, as part of the monetized, um, monetized TIF. Uh, so again, throughout, since that time, uh, staff has reached out to, uh, the developer, uh, numerous of times. Um, in addition, uh, we also noted, uh, a default to, to actually construct the property or complete construction of the property. Um, so that was failure to cure as of March sixteenth. Um, so in front of the council today is, again, uh, just a, uh, the memo kind of explaining the existing conditions, as well as, uh, certain options, uh, the common council may, may take, um, as part of, uh, a result of these, of these defaults. Um, you know, option one, we could do nothing, continue to wait to your back from the developer. Uh, two, we could amend the development agreement to extend the project timeline and reduce the expected, uh, valuation of the project. Uh, three, work with the developer to amend the, uh, development agreement, modifying the performance incentive for completion of partial project or involuntary, uh, termination of the remainder. Uh, option four, declare breach of the agreement and notify the developer of the city's termination of its performances, of any and all obligations and undertakings under this agreement. Uh, five, pursue formal work termination of breach and terminate the city's obligations under that, uh, development agreement. So, at this time, uh, due to, uh, basically, the, uh, the time that has lapsed, uh, again, this development agreement was executed over a year ago. Um, we've heard, uh, again, very little communication and very little progress on this building and on this project. So, at this time, staff does recommend the, uh, number four of those options, uh, whereas the common council would declare a breach of the development agreement and direct staff to send formal notification to the developer and the, of the city's permanent termination of its performances and any and all undertakings and obligations under the agreement.
Okay, so Alderman Sevenick has been patiently waiting. Go ahead, Stan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. At this time, um, I would, uh, agree with staff's recommendation where that the common council, um, would declare a breach of the development agreement and direct staff to send a formal notification to the developer of the city's, uh, permanent termination of this, of its performance, of any and all of its undertaking and obligations under the agreement.
Second. Tom Grady?
A second by Alderman Tom Grady. Uh, Stan, did you want to continue, or?
Yep, I, that's what I went back on. Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I find this whole situation unfortunate. Um, I, I think we have an obligation here because this is a specific agreement that we took, we undertook, that we need to, uh, terminate this. I don't think we should absolutely not continue to work, uh, with the developer in the future. Um, obviously, with the COVID nineteen, um, there have been issues with banks and financing and, um, a number of other issues. Uh, I also know that, and a lot of us forget, that last fall, we had some of the worst weather, um, especially excessive amounts of rain, and, um, we didn't even, we weren't even able to complete projects within our own, uh, city budget because of that. And, uh, I think that, uh, staff should also be directed to inform the developer that, uh, we're not completely giving up on the situation. It's just that we have an agreement here. It hasn't been followed through. We need to do our due diligence here and, um, make sure that, uh, that this particular agreement is terminated, and we can always look at a different agreement in the future if we have to, because the area out there is depressed. It does need help, and, as you know, um, this COVID nineteen is just harming every possible business out there. Um, so, uh, Sam, I hope that that's the kind of message you would send, and I would hope that the council would continue to move forward in the future on this. We can't just let that property sit like that. Thank you.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions for, uh, Sam. Thank you for this update. I know it's been a struggle. That's, you know, I look at that area over there with the tri-county and the highway access, and it's so many cars will by, so many cars. It's a great location. So, I'm just wondering, what are your plans forward? If we accept option four, how are you going to market this in the future?
Yeah, thank you, Ted. And I, again, I, uh, reiterate everything that, uh, Alderman, uh, Sevenick had stated. So, uh, as part of this, this termination and this recommendation, um, obviously, it did not come lightly, and, and, and we did give some time, uh, to discuss that. Uh, but a- again, as Alderman Sevenick said, this, this area is, is certainly in need. Um, you know, not only with the, uh, the Shopko Plaza area, but the, the former Shopko itself. Um, and so we, we are, at this time, leaving tax increment district number fourteen open. Um, and hopefully, we can, uh, restrategize, uh, again, talk to the ownership, um, uh, with Mr. Youngbacher, as well as the ownership of, of the Shopko Building, and see if we can't, uh, bring back, uh, some, some future, future development proposal for this area, uh, that might be more conducive towards, uh, towards the market and, and long-term.
Another question than Sam would be, with this TIF fourteen, how long, is it tight? How long we can keep something open as to a TIF?
Um, the, the TIF district was created for, I, I guess, a certain project, um, with, with, uh, developer incentives, uh, in mind. Um, so again, we, we don't necessarily want to keep it open, open-ended, um, but we, we can certainly keep it open, um, until we brainstorm a little bit of how we want to come back and, and look at this project.
Okay, thank you.
There any other discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Sam, uh, I had mentioned a couple of times when this project's, including the Shopko property was brought up, that I think we really need to reach out to the, uh, Fleet Farm Company, which is located, their corporate headquarters, just a few hundred yards down the road, and especially with this Shopko property, that they may have some use, uh, for, for that property. So, I would encourage you to, uh, to, uh, look at that avenue. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director Schrader, given all the things that Alderman Sevenick, uh, Alderman Sevenick cited, um, about past and current positions, help me understand why we would need to terminate an agreement in order to keep working with the developer?
Uh, so that, uh, again, I think that's why, um, staff laid out, uh, certain options. Um, again, you know, working with the developer may not be the specific project that was, um, that was called out in that development agreement. Maybe it's, uh, you know, brainstorming, uh, a different project, reworking the site, um, things of that nature. So, I, I believe, uh, what Alderman Sevenick is saying is that, uh, you know, Mr. Youngbacher and Alexander Bishop, um, in general, is, is still the owner of the property, um, and the, the property is still, um, in need of revitalization. So, working with that and keeping that channel open, I, I, I do think is a, a good idea.
Wouldn't that also be achieved through an amendment to the agreement?
It, uh, it certainly could, um, but obviously, um, knowing of what we're going to do with the property is, would take, uh, several, several months. Um, and I'm not sure if Attorney Captain wanted to chime in as far as kind of leaving an open-ended, uh, development agreement out there, um, and what that may, uh, may do in the future and cause legal issues. Uh, but again, so that is why, at this time, staff is recommending, uh, basically, um, the execution of, of the defaults, um, and terminating the development agreement at this time.
Attorney, thank you, Sam. Attorney Captain, could you address that issue?
And I guess I need a little help understanding the question.
My question is, well, my first question was why we would need to terminate an a- an agreement in order to keep working with the developer. Director Schrader indicated that there may be a change of scope that could be worked out, uh, or a change of goals. And my question was, why couldn't that be achieved, um, through an amendment to the existing agreement? And he indicated that there may be some legal issues with keeping an agreement like this open for an extended period of time, and that you might have something to say about that. And so, I'm asking you.
Um, actually, what we are doing is based on language that is contained in the agreement. And so, if we, um, discover a breach, we are required, under the terms of the agreement, to provide certain notice, which then gives the person the opportunity to cure that. And if they do not cure it, then there also is, uh, provision in the contract that indicates that the city has the option to terminate its performance of any and all of the undertakings and obligations that the city has. In other words, why would the city perform under the term or under the agreement, why would the city start, um, performing its obligations if the developer hasn't been performing its obligations? Uh, so that's what this is. Um, so to say that it terminates the contract, I guess, is not accurate. What it does is, under the terms of the agreement, provide notice to the developer that the city is selecting not to perform its obligations, since the developer hasn't performed. There's still, obviously, um, you know, in continuing talks with the developer, it just puts both of the parties back at square one to try and begin again and figure out something that perhaps will work. And I do want to just mention, since there was mention of, um, COVID nineteen, that's only been, um, recently, since March. This agreement has been around a lot longer than that, and the developer was provided notice prior to the end of the year and was supposed to complete some of its obligations at that time. So, that was way before anything, uh, with regard to COVID nineteen started.
Thank you for answering that question. Uh, Director Schrader, has the city performed on any of its obligations, uh, up to this point?
The, the city has not-
The city has not paid any performance incentives at this stage due to the project not being completed.
The city has performed its obligations thus far, which were just to be cooperative, to act in good faith and the like. And that is what the city has been doing. But the actual payment of the performance incentive, you know, it, it's not do-annoying anyways yet. So that's what we're indicating to the developer, that we will not be undertaking any further obligations.
Other than the default notices that were sent to the developer, has there been any other written communication?
So staff did basically, since our meeting in December, reach out almost on a weekly or if not bi-weekly basis via email. We have had a few verbal communications over, over the phone. I believe there has been two, one in March and one in April. And obviously, that was after the COVID-19 had set in, obviously adding to some, some additional uncertainty as well as uncertainty of, of being able to perform the developer's obligations even further.
Thank you for that. And I understand that we're all very frustrated with this, how this has progressed. And as things have gone on, things have changed dramatically. And so at the end of the day, say we permanently terminate the city's performance agreement, what do we gain by doing that?
Did you want to comment, Sam, or?
Is that, is that a question directed at staff? I mean, I can comment on that.
Hold on, Sam. Let, let Sam comment if he wishes to. And then Stan can go after that. Did you want to comment?
So I guess the question is, what do we gain by terminating, are the city's performance requirements?
Yes.
So I think, you know, as Captain, Attorney Captain had mentioned, I, I think what we, what we gain here is, is a clear understanding that, that the city will not be performing on, on the obligations that it set forth in the previous development agreement. However, we, we are back to square one and we are leaving the TIF district open at this time. And, you know, we'll be willing to communicate on, on how to move that project forward.
Is the developer aware of this possible action this evening?
The developer was emailed last Friday, the council packet, as well as, it was noted in there regarding this action item. And staff was, did make ourselves available to communicate should they have wished, and we have not heard back.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that that communication was made. As much as I understand how much we're frustrated with this process, I think at this point in time, given where we are in the, with the economy, where we're headed, and the situation in retail at the moment, this particular property owner is probably dealing with his tenants right now, and that's his number one priority at this point. And at this point in time, I think that we have to be very careful about the message we send not only to this developer, but to any developer who might be interested in working with Menasha and that we're working in Menasha. What kind of messages are we sending, sending to others about how we will work with them to make sure that we both come out benefiting from an investment? When we terminate this agreement, I think about what, what we're left with. Still left with a building in need of improvement that happens to now be in a more dire situation given the state of the economy and retail in general. So I think we need to be careful about the message that we send and how we're sending it. I would feel more comfortable terminating this obligation if I knew that it was an amicable decision between both parties.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as this sending a message, the message is this, and that is, you enter into an agreement with the community, you should follow through on it, especially when this particular city has gone out of its way over, overextending actually this agreement and giving the developer every opportunity to come forward and communicate even better than he has. And he did attend a meeting a few months ago with us. And you do recall, he thought that he had financing available, and that wasn't true. And that didn't happen. I, I can't be clear enough. I still continue wish to work with the developer, but we have an agreement here. And when the agreement, the agreement is no longer working, I think it's our obligation as a common council to end this agreement. That's why, as the city attorney was explaining, that's what's in the agreement. So we need to follow through, terminate this agreement. I'm, I'm the last guy that wanted to terminate this agreement. I've actually had meetings with Sam and this developer with hopes of not only getting the Starbucks put in there, but to see the plaza all work out. And then, of course, you remember, then Shopko pulled out. And if anything bad happened, it happened. And it's unfortunate that this is what happened to the city of Menasha. And then to make matters worse, the COVID-19 situation happened. So we have an obligation here as a common council to terminate this agreement at this point. Not to say that we're done dealing with them, because we can always enter into a new agreement down, down the road. TIF 14 is still there. And I think we just need to move forward. I think we spent more than enough time on this.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. So pretty much everything, I, I agree with Alderman Sevigny. I just wanted to give my two cents, because since day one, I voted against this and have been against this up until this evening. I don't trust this developer. And until he proves me, me different, I'll, I'll never trust him. So this developer comes, and I'll be honest with everybody, if this developer comes with something else, I will be voting no. He has lost my trust. When he was in here December 16th, he said he needed another month. So COVID-19 had nothing to do about him getting money in the middle of January. I don't know what his issue is. But to me, he's playing the city. And that's something that I will not stand for. So with me, I'll be voting for number four. So, okay, thanks.
Alderman Nichols?
I'm sorry, I have nothing left to add.
Sorry, I saw your hand was still up. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. And I do agree with Alderman Nichols on this. And what is our message saying to these developers? Yes, he must have ran into some trouble. The COVID-19 showed up in this country in January. And as developers and financial people, they are in different circles, but they certainly, their financial circles are different than ours. And there might have been some reluctance on their part with the China outbreak and then getting to our country by January. So the warnings were there just a month after he spoke at the council. And I think he was genuine in what he was trying to do for the city and what he was doing for our developments. And we certainly, we got the Starbucks building. But I think how he was treated in that December 16th meeting in front of our body was not very professional. And he drove, he drove from Upper Michigan that night in bad weather to get here. And the outcome of that meeting, he left Menasha with a very bad taste in his mouth by comments that were made to him that evening. You could see on his face. And like you said, there's so much money to put out there. And, you know, pretty much if you're not welcome in the city and you want to treat people like that, they'll, they'll go somewhere else. So I think this might be the double whammy, the, the treatment he got on the council floor in December. And now this, this agreement here. And if there was, if there was other meetings with staff and Alderman, we should have been aware of what came out of those meetings and what the conversations were to keep us informed on the situation here with this developer. But I think we need to treat all developers with respect in our community and business-like. And in this situation, I think that was not the case. So I certainly agree with Alderman Nichols. I think we should, we're in a terrible situation right now financially, the whole world. And I think we should back off for a moment again and maybe put together a conference call if Alderman Nichols, who's the chairman of administration, would like to be on that call and with the mayor and, and Sam and council president and, and see, see what direction we take. But I think we should be careful with this. And, and I think we should buy a little more time. Thank you.
Before we go forward, I just wanted to put a couple of facts before everyone. The agreement was signed on May 7th of 2019, so approximately a year ago. And the developer obligations were that the developer will commence construction of the project for the Starbucks building by May 1st, and will begin construction of the facade improvements no later than September 1st. And that the facade improvements will be completed no later than December 31st of 2019. So we are definitely putting them on notice that he hasn't even started at this point, even though he was supposed to be finished approximately five months ago, four months ago, I guess. And he hasn't even started at this point. So we have been working with him and we will continue to work with him. But at this point, we do need to put him on notice that he needs to perform on his portion of the agreement if he expects us to perform on our portion. Alderman Sevigny, did you have something else?
Yeah, I was gonna echo exactly what you said, Mayor. That's why we have these agreements. And when you don't, when you're in business, you don't follow through, you're out. And he's made commitments to the city and has failed at every option here. And we have an agreement that we need to take to protect ourselves. And that's why we need to terminate this. That's the main thing. All the other things, and as far as James, you're concerned about me having a meeting, this was before even any development agreement. He came to the city wondering if he, if we would even interested in having or helping him and this kind of stuff. So that's, that was the meeting, and that was probably two years ago. So anyways, I, I think we've discussed this enough. Unless the two council members got amendments to offer, offer them. But let's, let's please move on here.
Alderman Grady, did you have something?
Yes, I did, Mayor. Thanks. Thank you for adding that about the dates, May 7th. I know Rebecca Nichols is concerned about what message we sent into developers. But hey, it's almost been a year. You signed contracts, you did certain things, things should have been done and didn't get done. And as far as this COVID-19 thing is, don't use that as an excuse. If anything, that's a benefit, because the interest rates are so low right now. If you can't finance something today, you're never going to be able to finance something. So as Alderman Sevigny said, let's move on. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that Director Schrader is now, does lay out the steps of the agreement. And the developer did demolish the Garden View Restaurant. He did substantially, he did complete the new multi-tenant building. And the building does have one tenant, and those were all part of the agreement as well. Just want to point that out. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I wanted to echo that too, that we have a beautiful building out there now with Starbucks in it. And the plaza looks a lot better. People are out there visiting that plaza. So as we go into steps, like tonight, we're going to approve another agreement for apartment complexes. And that has three stages to it. And right now, I don't care what interest rates are, everyone with money is locking it down. These are uncertain times. The economy is completely shut down. And anybody with money out there is going to be locking everything down at this point, because we don't know where this virus is going. People can't even go to work. You can't even operate businesses. So you're not going to get the investments that you think you're going to get. And I agree with the approach that Alderman Nichols wants to take with this. And I think another conference call with, with her and with the mayor and Sam and whoever else wants to be on that and, and talk and get a feel for this and, and find out where that end. And I wasn't suggesting that Alderman Sevigny had a, a call privately or something to it. I was just seeing if there was calls in the last month, couple of months or something. That's what I was looking at. So I appreciate that clarification on that too. So I think he has, he has done a lot for the city. Beautiful building. And Starbucks in our city is, is really, really positive for the community. So I, I would like to see us back up here and see where Mr. Peter, I forgot his last name, Young, is, is where he's at with this project. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call book, please?
Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Do you need me to repeat the motion, anyone?
Yes, please.
Okay. This motion by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Tom Grady, to go with staff's recommendation of number four, to declare a breach of the agreement and no- to declare a breach of the agreement and notify the developer of the city's termination of its performance, of any and all of its undertaking and obligations under the agreement. So we've got Alderman Sevigny with an aye. And Alderman Langdon?
Yes, thank you. I.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grati?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grati?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Nay.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call six, two.
Item six is the Fox Cities Regional Partnership Investment. I believe Jamie is here as well as Sam. Do we have any questions for anyone?
Mayor?
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with staff's recommendation that at this time, um, we only approve releasing half of the uh, amount due, which is $5,000. So I'll, I'll make that as a motion that at this time, the common council only release half of the amount, 5,000 in contingent, continuing collaboration with other investors of the Fox Cities Regional Partnership. And that uh, released prior to the, to a completed and implemented Economic Development Council Strategy Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a second by Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Schmidt? It's kind of like that TV show that everyone's watching.
I guess so, yeah.
I'm sure that's not the only time she heard that.
That's not. If you take out every other letter of Schmidt, that's what you get.
Oh gee.
Sam, did you have anything else?
No.
Director Schrader?
Oh, Schmidt. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I guess while, while we are here at this stage, um, I, I do maybe want to just briefly introduce you to Jamie Sellen. I guess I've never pronounced her last name, so hopefully that's how you would pronounce it as well. I know she is listening on and maybe she could just give a, a brief update as far as what the, the partnership is, is doing right now um, as, as part of the, the regionalism that, that we're looking to invest in. Five minutes.
Uh, well, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so we're all very close on the pronunciation of my last name. It's actually Celine and it looks nothing like that. Uh, so I, I'll, I'll go by any last name. Uh, so again, my name is Jamie Celine. I'm the Vice President of Economic Development Government Affairs for the Fox Cities Regional Partnership. Um, I thank you for the opportunity to, to be at your meeting. I wish it was, and I hope the next time. I look forward to the next time being in person and showing you the strategic plan that we are working on. We did, we do have a draft of that plan that was worked on by our Economic Development Council. Um, uh, it, it basically outlines three priorities, uh, which are business retention and expansion visits, uh, business attraction and talent attraction. We do have a fourth initiative, which is things that come up that need our attention, which is kind of what we're under right now with, with the COVID-19 virus in this area. Um, in the last few months, we've been focusing on helping businesses through this time. We've been surveying and calling all of our members and non-members uh, and uh, finding out how we can best meet their needs. We have um, directed them towards different uh, funding opportunities through either SBA or uh, for local revolving loan programs. In fact, we are involved in the Winnebago Rapid Response Program where we are uh, helping to promote the program and then also uh, look through the applicants and help them get the uh, the funding they need to continue on during this time. Um, so I look forward to, to working with you in the future. And please, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have questions for Jamie this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Jamie. Thank you for being with us tonight. Did you mention that there's a draft available of the strategic plan?
Uh, yes, there is a draft. I did uh, provide it to Sam um, for review. It, it, it really is what we're trying to do is we, we win, the Economic Development Council, which is made up of public and private investors, um, had an hour and a half time where we brainstormed of the top, uh, top three to five things that we wanted to accomplish. Um, and then we are putting tactics and metrics to it. So right now, we have our top three, um, but we are working on the tactics and metrics uh, so that we can report those on a quarterly basis right now. And I hope to have this done uh, fairly soon. And we just kind of got knocked off of our course because of, of the COVID virus.
Working on metrics and what?
Tactics. How, how we're going to meet goals.
Thank you. And the three priorities again were retention, attraction and uh, talent attraction. Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Nichols?
Yes. You mentioned in your memo that you, in your opinion, that great progress was being made on this plan, things were headed in the right direction until the COVID-19 pandemic.
Yes, that is, that is correct. Um, again, with this plan, uh, again, in my time with the city of Manasha, I think it's, it's great progress, uh, kind of revamping. Um, this is kind of what, what Manasha was looking at as, as well. Um, not just establishing goals, but also determining how we're going to meet those goals. And then how do we make sure we're meeting those goals? What are those measurables? Um, so that's kind of the, the things that Jamie is uh, referencing tonight. And again, I, I think we will get there and continue to build off of what we have.
Thank you. Given that the partnership is just eight years old and there's been a lot of bumps along the way, uh, I, I agree. I think really good progress is being made here and that, that work will continue. I also believe the partnership is doing the exact thing that they need to be doing right now and that is uh, responding to the COVID-19 economic impact. Um, you know, as a city, we made a commitment to fund this organization and we should follow through with our commitment 100% and pay them the money that we owe them right now so they can continue to do their work. Um, business as usual is really a thing of the past and we have to come to that realization and figure out how we're going to do that. And going forward, I really believe Manasha needs to be doing everything we can to support um, business owners and owners of commercial properties and other businesses here in Manasha. So I think that we should pay them the $10,000 we um, have been invoiced for and that we agreed to pay.
Mayor, can I address that?
Sure.
Um, thank you. Uh, and, and in a lot of ways, I sort of agree with Alderman Nichols. But um, we've done this once before where we gave out ha- half the money the first six months and then the other half, the other six months. Because uh, in the past, there were several council members. I think we were only one vote away from actually having no funding for uh, for this uh, organization. So uh, I think this is a good strategy. I mean, it doesn't make sense. I certainly wouldn't want to pay Northeast Asphalt upfront all the money to do DePier Street before they started the project. So um, you know, we pay them as we go along and I think that that's what we should do here too. Uh, we'll pay half this time and then half later on. So I don't agree with paying full amount at this time.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Jamie, could you give us uh, uh, the boundaries of what the Fox Cities Regional Partnership? Uh, where are those boundaries throughout the, the valley here?
Sure. So we uh, basically cover Idigamee and Calumet Counties and the northern half of Winnebago County.
Okay. And uh, is the city of, or the village of Wrightstown, city of New London, uh, village of Hortonville, are all those new to the regional partnership at this time?
Uh, they have been existing investors.
Okay. So they're on board before, before this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And uh, what, how much did Appleton reduce theirs, their budget by?
Uh, Appleton is uh, funding us to, uh, at 30,000.
Okay. And that's a reduced from?
I, I'm, I, I apologize. I don't know that number. I've only been with the partnership for, uh, since December.
Okay. And uh, an overview, uh, what, what has the partnership done for Manasha here in the last year?
Oh, so I did send that in a report. Uh, we have done a number of uh, BRE visits, uh, some with Sam and, and some unfortunately we couldn't connect with Sam uh, as part of the Foreign and Direct Investment Program. Uh, and then we also uh, most recently uh, joined forces with uh, the Go EDC, the Greater Ashgosh Economic Development Organization to bring the Rapid Recovery Revolving Loan Program to Manasha. Uh, otherwise uh, those dollars would not be available for Manasha businesses. Uh, we also bring together um, all of our municipal partners. During the last couple of months, we brought every single municipality together to talk about how they're handling their response uh, during this uh, time of COVID uh, and really kind of providing resources and educating our municipal uh, partners on the different uh, changes in either the Safer At Home Order, the CARES Act, um, and, and issues like that.
Okay. So communities that aren't financially uh, committed to this Fox, Fox Cities Regional Partnership, are they at all uh, uh, taken care of or, or uh, are they all, are they at the table at all? Uh, or, or aren't they represented by the partnership?
So if they, the communities that are not investing in the regional partnership are not on the Economic Development Council, which is where we do the majority of our work, well, all of our work really, um, but we are having conversations with all of those municipalities uh, to bring them back to the table to get this to be a true regional partnership. And we have been making a lot of really positive moves in, in getting more communities uh, back to invest in the partnership.
So the communities that, that aren't investing in this, are they getting the same representation as what we're getting uh, by being a part of this?
No, they are not. They don't have any representation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, kind of to answer Alderman Taylor's question, uh, basically the uh, uh, I guess, the Fox Cities Regional Partnership often requests $1 per population, per individual. So if Appleton-
I understand, I understand that.
Uh, I just want kind of the gallery to know this too, or the rest of the people that um, we're not fully funded this time either. I believe we're what, about, is it 12,000 or is it 10,000 at this time? Sam, do you know the number offhand?
So the, the amount that uh, our budget was reduced, I believe, two years ago was uh, down to 15,000. Um, and then this year, we did uh, sponsor the uh, Future Career Day. Um, so we also did get accredited uh, that, that amount for that, dropping our invoice down to 10,000.
Okay. Cause our, otherwise our obligation would have been about 17,000. So Appletons, I don't, I forget their population. I know it's about, about 85,000. So should have been 85,000 and not 30. So actually, the city of Manasha does a pretty good job of helping the Fox Cities Regional Partnership.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Building off of what Alderman Sevigny said about uh, this is how we've done it in the past, releasing funds uh, a couple of times throughout the year. I would like to offer an amendment, this is a motion, in keeping with that philosophy. Uh, but the amendment is to remove the understanding that the second half would not be removed prior to a completed and implemented Economic Development Council Strategic Plan.
That was part of my motion.
Yes, I'm offering an amendment to remove that from the motion.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Nichols and Taylor. Can I ask for a little bit of clarification then? When would the second half be released, Alderman Nichols?
Uh,
Hold on, it's Alderman Nichols amendment, so.
When would we normally release the second 5,000 if this is how we've done it in the past?
So it would be at the, at the discretion of the director?
What, before December, before December 31st of 2020?
So at the discretion of the director, but before the end of the year?
Correct.
Okay. Just how I understood. So there's a motion and a second to amend to remove the portion of the amendment, a portion of the motion with the understanding that the second half of the funds will not be released prior to a completed and implemented Economic Development Council Strategic Plan. Any other further discussion on the amendment?
Uh, if I could just add my, my reason for the amendment, thank you. Um, I'm offering that amendment because it, the motion, the idea of releasing $5,000 now apparently keeps with the spirit and intent of past practices. And um, I believe the, from what I've heard tonight from Director Schrader and from Jamie that the regional partnership has made great progress in developing that strategic plan. Uh, and I think that they're doing good work right now um, responding to the COVID-19 crisis. So I would hate to make, and they need funds for that and I would hate to make their funds contingent upon uh, something that they've been working really hard on and are, uh, will continue to work hard on, but they're addressing an urgent need at the moment.
Alderman Sevigny?
I'll use my DePier Street example again. So, okay, so we'll, we'll give Northeast Asphalt all the money. Um, we're not really concerned whether the curb and gutter goes in yet. We, we're sure that that'll happen at some point, but here's all the money right now. I don't think that's very professional. I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion on the amendment? If we could have a roll call vote on just the amendment at this time?
Alderman Langdon?
Nay.
Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Schmidt?
We go back to Ann, she-
No, I'm sorry. I was still muted. Nay.
Sorry. Alderman Tom Grati?
No.
Alderman Ted Grati?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Nay.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny?
No.
Motion carried on roll call five, three to-
A motion?
Motion, excuse me, motion fails on roll call three, five, to, to amend.
So now we're back to the original motion. And if we could take a roll call on the original motion, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Ann, are you still muted?
Yeah, sorry. I, I hit the button, but it doesn't click, click enough. There you go. Aye.
Alderman Tom Grati?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grati?
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Savernik.
Aye.
Alderman Langdon.
Aye.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item seven is a DOT equipment grant acceptance. Do we have a motion? Anyone?
I'll take it, I guess. I was looking for the dollar amount, but I guess it's anyways, Mayor, I'll move for the DOT equipment grant acceptance. And authority to purchase.
Second.
There's a motion by Alderman Savernik and a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Chief Staka. Could you tell everyone more about this, please?
Sure, this is similar to the other DOT grants, which basically by doing a traffic enforcement, our name gets put into a hat as well as the other agencies that participate in those specific traffic enforcement periods of time, like clicker ticket or you drink and drive, you lose. And somehow, I don't know, someone must be putting gum on the back of our name or something, but our name keeps getting pulled out, which has been really nice. We received, this will make now $20,000 over the last several drawings that they've done. So this will be another $4,000 equipment grant that will be awarded to us.
Thank you, Chief.
We like grants.
Yes, we do.
Other discussion, Alderman Savernik?
Oh, no.
No?
I wasn't. No.
Okay, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Staka, the traffic, these traffic grants, just comment on traffic. I've noticed it seems like with, I don't know if it's a stress level of people not working or you think it would be during the working time when they're trying to get to work, but the the running of stop signs or red lights. And I was passed on Third Street at about 60 miles an hour today and the guy went down, was passing everybody on the left to the right and and on Highway 41, I've seen some speeds well over probably 100 miles an hour. Is this just something that I've seen or has this been reported with the of lately?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's something that we're seeing not only locally here, but nationwide. As there were fewer cars out on the road, those that were driving saw open lanes and were really taking advantage of that. And quite frankly, all of the law enforcement agencies ourselves included did start scaling back some of our traffic enforcement efforts in the earlier days of COVID, just because we weren't exactly sure how it was really spreading and what we should be doing. So approximately two weeks ago, we've re-instructed our folks to re-engage, so to speak. And we're back out there more than what we were in the earlier stages of COVID to try to get that compliance again through the city. So trust me, you aren't seeing it. I have seen people not even slow down for the stoplight at First and Racine three times now. I've made more traffic stops in the last couple of days than I have probably the last five years. So, you know, we're we're certainly seeing it as well and and we're definitely out there trying to reel things back in a little bit.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And I noticed our adjoining communities have their speed wagons out there. That's what I call them that tells people what their speed is. So I think those are helpful tools to have out in the community, but certainly it's it's strange times. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item eight is a motion to reconsider R 1720. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this is just some cleanup language. I was going to bring it up at the last meeting, but I just the meeting went so long, I just thought I'll bring it up for the next meeting. So anyways, at this time, I'll like to make a motion to reconsider R 1720, a resolution adopting rules of the common council and the mayor.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to reconsider.
Hey, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor. This is just reconsider. So let's all those in favor moving to reconsider, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? None, the motion carries. Go ahead now, Stan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I asked the city attorney to make the correction. As you all know, it is only the mayor and the alderman that can make ordinances and resolutions and not special committees and standing committees. So that part needed to be stricken. So I don't know how you want me to make this motion, but I guess, Mayor, at this time, I'll move that under resolution R 1720, that under 1.06, that under two, the item be struck four and standing or special committee of the common council be stricken out.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? James, do you have discussion? I'm not sure when this was originally put into the ordinance, but this was in our previous ordinance as well.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with removing it. I don't think we've done this in the time that I've been mayor. I think we've always had aldermen. I don't think we've done it just by committee. So I don't have any concerns with this either. The attorney wants to comment as well.
Can I just clarify that this is a motion to adopt that resolution R 1720 with the change that was mentioned?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item M is appointments. Is there a motion for the appointments at this time? Alderman Schmidt.
No.
No. Oh, did I bump the hand button when I unmuted myself?
I'm sorry.
She can take them. And you can take it, Ann.
Take a stab, you mean? Just to are you approving both of them at the same time or the first one only?
You can do it either way, whichever your pleasure is.
Well, okay, I will make the motion to approve M one and two, the mayor's appointment. First off, number one of Ellen.
Maxime Mac?
Maximac, there you go, to the Board of Appeals for the term of five four 2020 to two one of 2023. And number two, the mayor's reappointment of Chris Kristen Stacker to the Board of Health for the term of five one 2020 through five one of 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Tom Grotty.
Second by Alderman Tom Grotty. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is claims against the city. Attorney Captain, did you want to comment on that?
I just put this on the agenda, included a little memo and it's there just for your information. I am not requesting any action. Thank you.
And oh, is I guess we do have public comment yet? I don't know if there's any from from the public that's on that wishes to speak. I do see that there are three people on the line for the next meeting. So if you're here for the development agreement, we are going to continue with that. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this point? I don't hear anyone. So with that, we will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:45.
Stan, were you seconding?
Sure.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We are adjourned.